Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's great to have you all here. On Cinco de Mayo, May 5th, I did read a little bit about it, and May 5th is not Mexican Liberation Day. That day is in September. Cinco de Mayo has a different history to it. When the French tried to take over the Hispanic and the America helped defeat that. So it's a little bit different. You can look it up on Wikipedia. My secular Bible. We're really happy to have Brother Mickey McGrath with us tonight, for those of you who have never, you know, been privileged to be able to listen to Brother Mickey and enjoy his art and even more the accompanying reflections with his art. And I also want to welcome Father Jack Lockren, who's with us tonight. Jack is the provincial of the Toledo Detroit province of the oblates of St. Francis de Sales. And he's here for a meeting, regional meeting of oblates that we had this week. He's leaving tomorrow. But I'm grateful for his being here and he's gonna come by as a part-time nursemaid in June as I'm recovering from talone and the bicular joint fusion surgery. So Mickey, the floor is yours. Thanks. Okay. Yeah, I did want to start first with a prayer in light of Cinco de Mayo. This is from the USCCB, the United States Catholics Conference of Bishops website, their prayer for migrants and refugees. So let us pray in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Lord Jesus, when you multiplied the loaves and fishes, you provided more than food for the body. You offered us the gift of yourself, the gift which satisfies every hunger and quenches every thirst. Your disciples were filled with fear and doubt, but you poured out your whole love and compassion on the migrant crowd, welcoming them as brothers and sisters. Lord Jesus, today you call us to welcome the members of God's family who come to our land to escape oppression, poverty, persecution, violence and war. Like your disciples, we too are filled with anxiety and fear and even suspicion. We build barriers in our hearts and in our minds. We ask you now to help us to unloose those barriers and to welcome all as brothers and sisters. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen. I am very happy to be here with you, even at this ungodly hour. And when John called me last week to ask if I would take care of the Cinco de Mayo, like John, I had to find out what Cinco de Mayo. I've always heard of Cinco de Mayo, but here we are. And so we're gonna look at Guadalupe this evening, but I thought I'd start off with this image here. I've been doing a series this year of images of the body of Christ, and it was inspired by live streaming mass, you know, and back in the day, I'd live at the cathedral in the diocese of Camden, New Jersey. And we didn't have a camera set up in the earliest days. So for the first 12 weeks after the pandemic started and churches were closed and all that, we were live streaming mass from our cathedral and the bishop was coming and celebrating it. And he's a good guy. We like him very much. And it was kind of a cozy thing. I grew to like it, but I never could get past the idea of mass without being able to get communion or Eucharist. It's kind of like, that's the point of mass, isn't it? And then all this talk of, I never have like the term Sunday obligation, because I just, you know, it conjures up images of this god of fire and punishment, and you better get the mass or you'll go to hell forever and all that kind of stuff. So I've been doing a lot with the body of Christ and different images and all the attention and given to our racial diversity and racial tensions. And so here's the body of Christ with not just white hosts inside, but inclusive of everyone. And it seemed like the perfect one to open up our talk this evening or look this evening at the Guadalupe. And I thought, this is a picture I've been showing for several years, the Holy Spirit does not fly backwards. And that's so much the root of our troubles, I think. Where do you start, right? There's any number of things that are the root of our troubles these days and our tensions and both in the country and the church. But it's, I think it's this one group of wanting to hold on tight to the way things always have been and resisting change and fearful of change even actually. And those who trust that we're moving into a new reality, like it or not, things are gonna be different. And this is where Guadalupe is so important and to know the story, because most estimates are, you know, the Catholic Church in America anyhow will be predominantly brown or Latino by 2035 or 2050 for sure. And I think this is scary to a lot of people, but my take as an artist is don't be afraid of it. Learn the beauty and the color and the culture of it. And I hope that's what I do with my work. So this is my latest Guadalupe image. I'm working, my next book that I'm working on now is on, it's gonna be called Madonnas of Color. And it's gonna be mostly black Madonna's, but some brown and Asian Madonna's and Native American Madonna's in there as well. And this one is a recent Guadalupe. And I did it because of her beautiful story, which we'll hear more in detail, involves roses in the winter. And here we are moving out of winter into spring. And soon it'll be spring into summer. And it's just that reminder that that's what how our souls operate, how life in general operates. It's just constant change and transition. And especially this past year, when we've said goodbye to so many things, not just loved ones, but ways of life and ways of being. And nobody knows what the future, what the new normal is going to be, but the old normal is not gonna be here anymore. And we, it's in nature teaches us that Guadalupe and the image of the flowers, it's a flowering trees that are part of her story. A reminder, again, the Holy Spirit only flies forward, doesn't cling to the past. So I was thrilled this year when Pope Francis named it the year of St. Joseph. And I immediately did four new images of Joseph. We're only gonna see this one tonight, because he's the patron of immigrants because of the story of the flight into Egypt. And so here he is in a traditional image iconography of Joseph, we see him with a walking staff with a lily on top of it. And that comes from an old legend in the early church that said that Mary always prayed to know who the right man was for her to marry. That so many men in Nazareth wanted to marry her and she didn't know who was the right one for her. And then she heard in a dream, they were big on dreams and that at that time was told that the man she intended to marry is, when he walked by her, his walking staff would sprout a flower. And so it's, that's why we always see him with a lily on a stalk. And but in this picture, I also included the red rose as a symbol of Christ's passion. And the sunflower, which is a symbol of hope, because and sunflowers turn their faces towards the sun all day. So they're forward looking flowers and they're bright and joyful looking. St. Francis de Sales loved sunflowers. And so did one of my favorite artists, Vincent Van Gogh. So I like to throw sunflowers around. And then you'll see a little pansy there at the top of the staff and the pansy is a traditional symbol. Used to be one of the symbols for Mary Magdalene. She's a patron saint of gardeners. And the pansy is a symbol of longing and remembrance when you're having those kind of maybe melancholy times when you're reflecting on the past and all that. That's what it pan, because it's a solemn purple colors. So this is Joseph, patron of immigrants. And here's a classic, very Spanish colonial image. This is helped with the Spanish, when they brought their iconography over from Spain to the New World into the Southwest. This is how we ended up looking, seeing a lot of this art. You certainly would be familiar with this in the mission churches in California there. But also all over New Mexico and Arizona. And the idea was in this kind of image with St. Joseph with the crown was that if Jesus is king of the universe and Mary's queen of heaven, then he should have some royalty too. So they just, it makes kind of sense for him to have a crown on his head. And you can see there's that sunflower. I turned the lily into a sunflower in this particular image. This is a real one with paint and not a digital. Most of what you'll see tonight is drawn on my iPad. But I thought I'd like to share with you some of the history behind Guadalupe and those early days of the conquerors coming from Europe. Because we don't know, and most of us don't learn these things in our history, either American history or church history. And it's not a pretty past and it's, I've been doing a lot of drawings around it and for my research. And Romanus Pontifex, what came out in 1454, this was the era of the Renaissance popes. One was creepier than the next. They were just out and out evil in some cases. And they all had kids, illegitimate kids and mistresses and named their own sons Cardinals. And I mean, it was, one was worse than the next. And this guy came up with a papal bull, which is an official papal document issued in 1455 by Pope Nicholas V. To King Alfonso Portugal, giving the king of Portugal, the total right to go, this is the age of exploration. They want to go off and explore the discover the new world and explore it. And Spain and Portugal were kind of fighting over this right. They were the Catholic countries doing it. And so with this confirmed Portugal's dominion over the lands in Africa, and he said, you have any, every right as Catholic Christians to make sure the people become correct, because they believed in this literal, you know, that you had to be a baptized Catholic to be saved. If you weren't in the Catholic Church, then you were headed for damnation. All this is in the waning days or the height of the Protestant Reformation. So this was a way Catholics were going out in mission territory. The Protestants were interested in that. They were staying put in Europe. But the Catholic Church was trying to expand the world and baptize everyone. I guess in their own weird way, they figured they were saving them, but they were just creating chaos. In 1441, there was a big council of Florence, and the basic gist of it was that outside the church, there is no salvation. And it said that mostly Roman Catholic Church believes, professes and preaches that no one existing outside the Catholic Church, not only pagans, but Jews, heretics and schismatics can have a share in life eternal. But that they will go into the eternal fire, which was prepared for the devil and his angels. So that's, I've been doing a lot of these pictures for some kind of a little bit of history lesson. But I just want to tell you, the picture that you're seeing on the left here was taken from a contemporary American church leader who still dresses like this with 12 foot long taffeta capa mania, they're called, the long capes made of satin. It's right out of the Renaissance and there's still people that harbor this kind of, it's atrocious. Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. This is an exact picture from the photograph I saw of this guy, except for the fringe hanging, the tassels off of the brim of his hat. This one didn't have those, but everything else is exactly how this guy dresses. And he's, I know, that's just shows you, the Holy Spirit doesn't fly backwards, but some people don't want to believe that. So Pope Nicholas V and Alexander VI, where Alexander VI is considered probably the worst pope in all of history. He was a Borgia pope and he left so much corruption and murder and his daughter, illegitimate, of course, Lucrezia Borgia was poisoning all her husband. I mean, it was, don't talk about family dysfunction. It was a mess. But he came up with these documents that the two of them, one was Dom de Versas, we'll see that in a second, and Inter Cetera was the other, both in the mid 1450s. And so we see here a pope and these are people from indigenous people from the lands that Spain and Portugal were now being given permission to conquer. And what the fans are holding that I put in this picture were drawn right out of the, these were used to fan the pope and to accompany him. They're based, they're inspired by Egyptian pharaohs. And Pius XII was the last one to use these. There are photographs of Pius XII who died in 1957, right, or eight? With these fans as he was being paraded into the Vatican or anywhere he went. And that's just why, you know, I don't want to get off too big of a sidetrack, but why Vatican II is so important? Because John the 23rd finally in 1962 says enough, it's time to come into the modern world and get rid of not only the clothing and the attire, but the mentality that went into this, that more importantly, you know, the spiritual underpinning of it. So here's Nicholas V. And again, this picture is based on a contemporary bishop close to home for you guys. And I just copied it and changed the face to protect the guilty. But in any event, here's what Pope Nicholas V wrote in Dom de Versus. "We grant you with our apostolic authority full permission to invade, search out, capture and subjugate any unbelievers and enemies of Christ and reduce their persons into perpetual servitude." Now, this is appalling to us, isn't it? Today in the church, I mean, just to think that where's Christ in any, Christ didn't matter in any of this. It was all about the power and authority of popes, the supreme pontiff of the universe. And you know, it was just all this stuff invading. And this is why the Protestant Reformation happened. That's why we have to, it's so important to know this history. Luther, all the Protestant reformers were realizing this is not what being Christ is. So this is what they were, they want it reformed. Alexander VI wrote, "Discovered people should be subjugated and brought to the faith." So two of his biggest fans were these two, Isabella Ferdinand and Isabella, the king and queen of Spain. And they wanted Spain to have dominance and everything. So they petitioned the pope to write them a new article and they were, they decided. And they wanted this article, this letter, this teaching that he came up with to justify their banning. They drew all the Muslims out of Spain. Up until then, in Spain, Muslims, Jews and Christians got along perfectly fine. They built each other's houses of worship. They shopped in each other's stores. There was no big issue. But they came along because they believe these decrees of the pope. And they firmly believed that everybody should be baptized Catholic or else they wouldn't be saved. So all Muslims were banished. We start seeing, if you ever go to Spain, you'll see images of St. James, Santiago de Campostella, riding on his horse and cutting off the heads of Muslims, you know, and this was an accepted practice. But then Jews, they said, either you leave and convert or leave. There were the two options, convert to Catholicism or leave the country. So those who converted stayed and they were called conversos. And that's what we see at the bottom of this picture here. Every Friday for the next 100 years, the Jews were, who were, who converted were accused of secretly still practicing Judaism at home privately and just being Catholic on the surface. So they were always suspicious, you know, suspect. So every Friday in Lent, young Jewish men and old were stripped naked and forced to wear goofy looking yellow clothing and yellow hats. Women, Jewish converso women had to wear yellow veils on their head, because that was the sign of the prostitute. And so what happened, they would take them in and put them on all fours. And they were paraded through the streets of the cities all around Spain and spit on and mocked and jeered at and beaten and, you know, people would just beat them up as they walk by on their hands and knees. And this was the, in good old Catholic Spain, under Ferdinand and Isabella. And so they're the ones who gave Christopher Columbus the money to come over here and do the same to Native Americans. They were strangely, Isabella was very opposed to slavery. I don't know how that little piece of morality crept in there. But she didn't want Columbus to start slavery, but anything else was open territory. And what's interesting, why I kept this picture in tonight is Teresa of Avila, one of the greatest mystics in church history. Wonderful writer, doctor of the church, was Jewish because her grandfather was one of these conversos. He had, he grew up, his whole life was Spain, his family, his friends, his business. He was a very successful businessman. I forget what kind. But he converted, as did his son, who was Teresa's father, and they were subjected to this kind of abuse. And in the Spanish law in those days said that conversos were not allowed to teach at the institutions. They couldn't at the universities like Salamanca, some of the best universities in Europe. They lost their jobs. They couldn't have a whole public office at all. And supposedly they weren't allowed to enter religious life. So we don't know, but Teresa of Avila somehow was able to get into the Carmelites, even though it's, they think it's probably because her grandfather had lived in Toledo. She converted to Catholicism and then they moved to Avila where she entered. So maybe she wasn't as widely known there as having Jewish blood in her. But in any event, she, it was her practice in all the monasteries that she founded throughout Spain in her day. She wouldn't, she ignored the law about not letting conversos in. But as soon as she died, the Carmelites went back to practicing that in Spain. So here's the symbol of church clobbering an indigenous person over the head and I'll convert you and I'll show you what salvation is. And the quote is from Isaiah, the prophet Isaiah, "My thoughts are not your thoughts, nor are your ways, my ways," says the Lord. And why this is important to us as Americans is this influenced how the United States acted. Even though they didn't like the church so much, they adopted this idea of manifest destiny. And you see that in American art history, that it was this belief that Americans had that this is ours and it's our God given right to do whatever we have to can to make it ours, to make it successful and to wipe out the native population. So the Indian Removal Act came out under, it was Andrew Jackson's idea. And they started the Trail of Tears in which thousands, 3,000 native people from Georgia, North Carolina, East Coast were marched in the dead of winter without food from that part of the country to Oklahoma, where they had put Oklahoma aside as the place where all Native Americans would be sent. Here on the East Coast, we don't have many Native Americans at all, because they were all forced into other places. Many migrated to Canada. But thousands died on this Trail of Tears. And it's just this horrible story, but one thing I love is that they learned about the Irish, the potato famine in Ireland. And they who had nothing scraped together little bits of money to send to Ireland for relief of the Irish people and the famine, because they had heard that the British were doing to the Irish exactly what the American government and the American army was doing to Native Americans here. And it's forged this nice, long relationship that still goes on today. There was a group in Ireland last year that collected a lot of money and sent it to Indian reservations for the COVID, because the native population is suffering with COVID more than any other group. And so anyhow, I'm getting off on all these tangents and I mean to, but I just want to show you that how important Guadalupe is in light of all this. And so this Manifest Destiny Act that came right out of the church's documents, just kind of secularize them, Americanize them, but it led to these other ones that you see here, the Supreme Court ruling that segregation was the law of the land in the South anyhow. Note that the black people could not get the social security and who are domestics and agricultural workers. And the Wagner Act of 1935 said blacks couldn't join unions. So all this comes to a head, of course, in the 60s with the civil rights movement and we're still grappling with it today in big ways. So Hernán Cortés was the conqueror of Mexico, the Aztecs in 1521. And he captured their great leader Montezuma, enslaved the native people. Smallpox killed three million Aztecs and that's happened all over the country. Cataract with up here in New York, in the Northeast. It's estimated that at least 60% of Native American populations were wiped out by disease that the Europeans brought that they had no immunity to. And so again, there's yet another way they suffered. And there are records that the British purposely distributed blankets to natives that were infected with the smallpox virus. And knowing knowingly what they were, knowing what they were doing, so it was genocide. They actively spread smallpox that way. So anyhow, that's three million Aztecs died in Mexico, once the Spanish got there. They started to build Mexico City on the ruins of Tenochtitlan, the capital. And that started becoming very attractive to Europeans. So Spaniards were starting to come over. Many of them conversos, because they were, they didn't have the same, you know, the abuse, discrimination in the new world that they might have had back in Spain. And a long story, again, I didn't mean to share this one, but if you ever visit the cathedral in Santa Fe, one of the most beautiful in the country. The facade of it was, you know, it was built in the 18, I forget, 50s or 60s. And they ran out of money in the construction and the bishop desperately needed money to finish the facade. And he went to the local Jewish business community. They were very wealthy people who gave the money to finish the sculptures on the front of Santa Fe Cathedral. So in gratitude, they create, it's not a menorah, but it's an image that I forget what it is now off the top of my head. It might be the 10 commandments, but to honor, to show their gratitude to the Jewish community. So it's just interesting over the generations, how things kind of shift and wane. This, with this letter was written by a Franciscan friar about Cortés. "Who has loved the Indians of this new world like Cortés? It was he who caused the Indians to love and revere the sacraments." I take issue with the word cause, because they forced the Spaniards were brutal. The Jesuits in the Northeast and from France, that's who kind of came to the Northeast and Canada. They were cruel in their own ways, but not brutal. They, Jesuits brought education with them and technology and astronomers and scientists and artists. And they offered liturgy and the language of the people, the indigenous language. They're always getting in trouble in Rome for that. But they, and they've started to record the languages of the people. The Spanish had a very different approach. They were, they were beating people if they didn't know their catechism answers. And if people had no idea what they were talking about, then they banished the, banned the language, the Nahuanos and the Aztec people, the Mayans. None of them were allowed to speak their language anymore. And they would be punished if they were caught doing that. The culture, the Aztecs had a very sophisticated knowledge of astronomy and a beautiful culture. When you see their ruins, their pyramids, the temples, but all that was wiped out by the Spaniards. So it's just kind of ironic that this monk with the friar would say this about Cortés, who kind of started the whole mess. Saint Teresa of Avila's brother was one of these conquistadors and he was one of the people that was sent to explore Machu Picchu in Peru. And they never made it. White settlers never made it up there. It was too high and out of reach. But in any event, they enslaved the people of Peru and Chile and all that and forced them to work the silver and gold mines. So when you visit these incredible churches back in Spain and Montserrat and everywhere, all the silver and gold came from the slaves of Latin America. And he would send a lot of money then to help Teresa start her monastery. So that's where some of her funding came from, from her brother, the conquistador. But all that aside, she was a pretty remarkable person. And this is one of her quotes, "It gives me great delight to think of my soul as a garden in which the Lord came to walk about." Now, that's a beautiful image, number one, and one that St. Francis de Sales loved. He starts talking about gardens. He had a very high regard for Teresa of Avila. She lived a century before him, but in any event, he, she, her main mission in life was to teach people that the average person can pray, as she called it, practice mental prayer, what we would say meditation today. But that was what she dedicated her work and her writings to, to tell. She said, no matter what you do in life, you should have this, have a personal relationship with God. Well, this, the boys in the front office there in the church didn't like this at all. Number one, she was a woman. Women weren't even supposed to read scripture on their own. They had to have a priest or somebody there to read it for them and translate it supposedly. And here she's writing the greatest classics of mystic literature. So her spiritual directors were always telling her, you kind of watch it, you know? She went through many spiritual directors. You can imagine that task being spiritual director to one of the great mystics of all time, right? So that was very threatening. But in any event, one of them said to her, when you write, don't, don't write in the first person. Say, I know a man who's such and such, or a woman who did this or that. He said, because they're gonna come for you. And the Spanish Inquisition, which was created to root out conversos, was, they were always after her, exploring her writings. She always survived. They decided she was the real deal, but just putting her through that torture to begin with. And I'm sure some of that comes out of being the other, the marginalized person because of her Jewish roots, you know? She didn't write much about that at all. She couldn't. So Francis de Sales said gardens, I'm sticking with this garden imagery now leading up to Guadalupe. But this is a recent quote, as I mentioned, my next book's on. But this is a recent quote, mine, as I mentioned, my next book's on dark Madonnas and I created this for that, based on that quote. The incarnation is God's kiss to creation. And I just love that whole notion that Christ become it. The earliest images of the um, of the Annunciation, Gabriel and Mary are take place in a garden. And that's a beautiful symbol when you think about it because it situates Mary at the New Eve in this garden where uh, unlike Adam and Eve, who were in the old garden, the Garden of Eden, where the fall happened and original sin and all that. And so this place of redemption and salvation is in this new garden. So um, so it was very common in the Renaissance of Middle Ages to show the Annunciation, the garden. And that's what we see here. So down in Mary's womb is the sunflower again. And notice the angel Gabriel's wings off to the right there, that little figure is butterfly wings to kind of link it to this new new life in the garden. This is a Spanish uh, Annunciation, Hola Maria, see. And this one I did last year when we were all locked in at home when March twenty-fifth, that's the Feast of the Annunciation. And it's Gabriel with Seek A written on his baseball cap there and uh, of a sea and the Holy Spirit saying yippee. Happy that she has said yes to this. So back to Mexico. Juan Diego, according to the story, is uh, was a converso, because what the Spaniards were forcing all native people into Catholicism in the cruelest of way. And he was one of these. Uh, he was an older man supposedly and um, very devout. And he was, there was an area, as I said, the language was banned, the national language. And and think of this, I read this in a book on Guadalupe once, that all the Indians are gathered and are watching these Spanish ships come to the shores of Mexico. And Cortés, the first thing he did when he got gets on shore is plants a big banner in the ground of a painting of Mary that he had brought with him from Spain, this huge banner of the Immaculate Conception. So um, and then they, the way they started treating the Indians, uh, the Indians assumed she was a war goddess of some kind, that that he was paying homage to with this banner, you know, and they said she must be some kind of a work artist. So um, and then their their language is banned, their culture. But there was one spot outside modern day Mexico City that was just this desolate wasteland that the the Spaniards used to just throw their trash there. They didn't want any parts of it. And that's where the the these uh, the natives loved to gather because they could speak their language in secret. Nobody was bothering them. And this is where Juan Diego had to walk through that area to go to mass in the morning. And one morning he was walking to mass and he heard birds singing. And in that culture, that was a sign of God's presence because birds are the messengers between earth and heaven. So he kind of climbed over this little hill to check it out. And there was this vision of Mary. So this is my modern interpretation of it. And you know, as the story goes, that she imprints her image on his his tilma or poncho and uh, but here it's on a sweatshirt. And he's in this trash area because that's what the Spaniards considered the area uh, where she appeared. So on December ninth on the Tapayac Hill in fifteen thirty-one, um, this is this apparition, this painting that we are looking at here is um, it's on canvas. It's a pretty large painting and it's, it was commissioned by a pastor at a church over in Philadelphia. And it says, this is the prayer to Pope Francis about Guadalupe. Through his intercession, may he present to our lady the countries of Latin America affected by the pandemic and natural disasters. So that she, as a mother, may go out to meet her children and cover them with her mantle. She's in turquoise because turquoise was the um, was a sacred color, the symbolic color uh, to the take to the native indigenous people of Mexico. And she has a black belt on because in that culture also that was what pregnant women put on in their eighth month of pregnancy. And it was a symbol, well-known symbol that um, in one more month, it was going to be a miracle. And so that it's a kind of a beautiful symbol, this this black belt. And uh, and again, it's a, it's a way to link her with the culture of the people. The important thing about, well, we'll get into that in a minute. Anyhow, this past year on December eleventh, the day before the Feast of Guadalupe, I was looked out my studio window and my neighbors, next door neighbors were renovating their house. It really needed it. They just moved in. They have a little baby and a beautiful dog. But they were fixing the house up. And I just happened to glance out the window and there was a worker in the backyard mixing up cement and um, I went out with my sketchbook right away. I thought I got to draw him. I said, there's Juan Diego. He's visiting me, right? And uh, right in my backyard. And when I got out there, the guy looked terrified and I, it hadn't never occurred to me that he probably thought his first reaction was that I was an a nice agent or someone who was going to turn him in if he was undocumented. And I, as soon as I thought, I thought, how could I been so dumb done? I held up my sketchbook and pen. I said, no, 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 I just want to draw you. And he he calmed down and finished his work and I was able to get the the sketch in and then painted it, you know, over the next week or two. But um, I, this whole idea of this beautiful event happening in the midst of a desolate, rejected area reminds me of this quote from Dorothy Day, seek beauty everywhere. And that's, that's kind of our big lesson. That's where we should get our hope today, that there is beauty everywhere. We just need to see it differently than the ways we may be accustomed, you know, be open to the workings of the spirit. So there she is. She's appearing to Juan Diego. The birds are singing. As I said, that was a sign. And um, she says to him, my dear little son, I love you. I desire a church in this place where your people may experience my compassion. And she says at another point, I want you to tell everyone, I'm the mother of all people. So this image, Guadalupe is the first indigenous image of Mary in the history of the church. She's no longer the little blonde haired French girl or Norwegian looking Madonna. She's indigenous, dark skinned to the people, wearing the black belt that the uh, the women wore, the Indian women. She's standing on a crescent moon, uh, which was a common device in European art. And um, and so, but there's all these little attributes that the moon was significant to the Aztecs and their astronomy. And um, it's said that the stars on her cape matched the constellation in the sky above at that time of year. So this is an older image of mine of Guadalupe. And instead of the black belt, she has the light of the world inside of her. She said, goes on to sell Juan Diego, all those who sincerely ask my help in their work and in their sorrows will know my mother's heart in this place. This is an image I painted for our cathedral here. And it's, she says, here I will see their tears. I will console them and they will be at peace. So now run and tell the bishop all you have seen and heard. And he goes to the bishop first terrified because, you know, he was this lowly, they, the bishop was this high and mighty guy, you know. You know, it wasn't going to take, give tight time to the visit with a little Indian person, you know, insignificant. And uh, Juan Diego knew this and he was terrified. And the bishop didn't believe him. So the second visit or uh, is when she says, well, go back. And that's, and she said, and and open, give him roses. And it was, the roses were out of season. It shouldn't have been growing, but she fills his tilma with roses. And she said, let them fall to the floor when you see them. And he did that. And there on his tilma was the image of her imprinted on there. Supposedly, I've never been there to Mexico City, but um, it's been analyzed and they say that um, they can see they, when they look at close-ups with modern uh, microscopes or telescopes, whatever, that in her eyes, they can see the reflection of someone kneeling on the ground, looking up at her. So I don't know if that's true, but it's beautiful story. And she says, my little son, there are many I could send, but you are the one I have chosen. Am I not your mother? Do not fear. So this whole image and story is about, it's become the very heart and soul of Mexico. She's appealing, even atheists love Guadalupe. She is Mexico. She's everywhere down there, I'm told. And oh, all kinds of images from clothing to, you know, anywhere, you know, that Guadalupe is reign supreme, because this event also happened on the site of a goddess of uh, the Aztec religion before that. And it was a woman that uh, that goddess was standing on a serpent. And that's the traditional image of Mary standing on the serpent, right? That's like the miraculous metal statue. And so that's, it kind of all comes together. And this is um, it's all connected. And this is another um, image is the end of her lessons to him. My little son, this is the sign I am sending to the bishop. Show these flowers to no one else but the bishop. This time the bishop will believe all you tell him. And that's what happened. This particular painting was that several years ago, it was done for Saint Edmund's University in Austin, Texas. And um, so instead of the roses in December that we hear in the story, this is over the wild uh, blue bonnets and the wild flowers outside. There's, um, if you've ever been to Austin, it's a very cool city. And um, Lady Bird Johnson started, made this whole big like National Park of wildflowers outside the city. Lovely. So that's what that is. I don't know if Saint Edmund's University is in the middle of that, but there they are. Call me and call my image Santa Maria de Guadalupe. This one, I wanted to look like a weaving or a tapestry. So she's called La Morena, the dark skinned lady. And uh, that's what so many of the Madonnas throughout Latin America were La Morena's dark skinned ladies, black Madonna's, dark Madonna's. And this one, particular one, uh, Guadalupe is called Cote La Supe in the, in the Nahuanos language, which means the one who crushes the serpent. So embroidered on her veil here, outfit or the birds that were singing to announce her presence and the flowers in the, in the garden there. So um, the here where I live, the cathedral, there are parishes largely Hispanic. The whole city of Camden is predominantly Latino, Puerto Rican. But we have a pretty large, sizable Mexican population coming. We, we have a whole lot of Mexicans here in the northeast part of the country until the last ten years or so. Um, and uh, South Jersey is very agricultural, so a lot of it was farm workers and all that were coming. But in any event, um, we have a growing population in our parish here. So the Feast of Guadalupe is always a big deal in December twelfth and I've been here twelve years and I remember this, but this was early on in one of my first years here. And I couldn't get over, I went into church and there was a thousand roses in the sanctuary, rose petals going down the main aisle, flags, Mexican flags draped across the aisle all the way down. And that statue on the left, it's life size, pardon me, life size image of Mary with this archway around it that had blinking lights. It's not a less is more cultural. And uh, and the flags, but it was so lovely, so moving. So I did that sketch and um, and then for the the next couple of years, I would go and sit up in the balcony and um, the choir loft and 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 watch the present sketch from up there. So this is one year. Then you can see the musicians on the right and incredible music and just a lot of joy. And it was usually late at night, um, people often walk. And uh, what I love is little kids, like little three-year-old boys that have ponchos on, like tilmas, like Juan Diego and little mustaches painted on their faces and straw hats that they, to symbolize Juan Diego. And then they have a big fiesta in the church hall afterwards, all kinds of food and all. I don't go over to that, but um, anyhow, I just love this, the pageantry of it. This, this was men waiting to carry that statue up the, up the aisle. And then this past year, I, this is my most recent one. I just did this, this past December, uh, up in the choir. That's our pastor with his Guadalupe chagable on. And um, hardly anybody there this year though, because of COVID. But you can see even the singer over on the right, he has his mask on and um, everybody's masked. But this year, that that's the colors of the Mexican flag and in that drapery around the statue with the red, white and green balloons. And there's two Mexican women bringing the gifts up at the ofatory in the center there. And uh, I'll just end by sharing a few more other images of Madonnas from Latin America that were inspired by the Spanish reached down. This is a parasita, which is Pope Francis, one of Pope Francis's favorite. She's the national patron of Brazil. And she was fished up out of the water. That's why I have her in a fishnet here. As slaves were told to prepare a nice dinner. Brazil didn't abolish slavery till twenty years after the United States, by the way. And the United States kept it even after Rome had condemned it. Uh, the, in the eighteen thirty-nine Pope Gregory the fifteenth condemned slavery out and out, said it's dehumanizing and evil uh, to enslave people. But the American bishops didn't want to hear that. They wanted to keep their in the South. So they found ways around it as you always can when you're just a legalist, you know, if, and they say, well, they didn't mean you can't have slaves. We just treat them nicely. So that's how they, but all the religious orders had to say, the Jesuits are dealing with that in uh, at Georgetown University. They had three hundred slaves there. And the Sisters of Visitation at their academy. But in any event, all that aside, um, so the story has it in Brazil that the slaves were fishing. And they drew, pulled their nets up out of the water. And then it was this statue. And that, her head was missing, but it was a black Madonna carved out of black wood. And they put then, and fish were in it as well. And when they pulled the next net up, her head was in there. So they attached it and put it on the prow of their boat. And she started, you know, miracles and healing started happening. So people really had great devotion to her. So she's now the national icon of Brazil. Did I put another picture of her in a, um, and around her in Brazil is built the largest Marian shrine in the world. It's this humongous place. They can seat forty-five thousand people. And when the Pope Francis was the head of the Latin American Bishops Conference, he had the bishops from all over Latin America meet at that shrine. Because he said he wanted them to be in the presence of something so small that had such great power and strength. Because the statue apparently is only like, no more than three feet high. And uh, when he was first Pope, uh, just a few months after he became Pope, he went to Brazil and visited the shrine and they took her out of the black glass case and so that he could hold the statue and he held it up and blessed the crowds with it. And uh, it's, it gets millions and millions of pilgrims a year to this shrine. Again, I haven't been there, just reading about it. But I put her in underwater in the net here. And um, I love this quote from Psalm one forty-four, reach down from heaven and save me. Draw me out from the mighty waters. And that's something I've been praying, you know, we'd say in morning prayer in the office, you know, for forty years and but I just hear things differently now that I have these new interests. It's like the same old and the familiar is coming at me in unfamiliar ways. And that, to me, that's a sign the Holy Spirit's at work. When you're seeing something you've seen all your life, you thought, I never thought of it like that before. That's God. That's God working. So here's um, some samples of Latin American inspired Madonnas I've painted over the years. Some of them you've seen. And I'll show you a couple. This is um, Guadalupe gets her name from, she was a very revered statue back in Spain that the conquistadors, Cortés had great devotion to her, brought a statue of her with him. And that's where the name comes from, Our Lady of Guadalupe. It's from this original one. But Columbus was also a great devotee of hers and he named the island of the Caribbean island after her. And if they believed in those days that that's that Saint Luke had sculpted this statue. This is Our Lady of Bethlehem in Peru. So the image on the left is Peruvian, but um, this is what Spanish Madonnas look like in Spain from that era, very elaborately clothed and um, uh, you know, gold and jewels. And I've saw some in Spain that had, had real hair. And one I saw, it was a beautiful statue, but her fingernails were even real human fingernails that they had attached to the statue. And so, but this is my right side is my painted version of of that image, Our Lady of Bethlehem. And this is an interesting story. Our Lady of the War Club, um, based on a sculpture of a very revered Madonna that the Pueblo Indians had a revolt against the Spanish. They could not take their cruelty another minute. And they had this insurrection. And they hit the statue of Mary with a club, a war club. And uh, it left that scar on her forehead. It's similar to the statue, the image of Chester Hova. She has scars on her face. And that's what this is. And the original statues in Mexico City, and there are four paintings of it. I saw the painting at an exhibit in Santa Fe when I was there. And so the painting on the right side is my sketch in my sketchbook of the image of Our Lady of the War Club. And this is, I just learned this story last year, fascinating, Our Lady of Congo and the Stono River Rebellion Rebellion. Slaves in South Carolina, I don't know if they all were from Congo, but many were from Congo. And Congo was a Catholic country because of those documents that we saw at the beginning, you know, the popes giving the Portuguese permission to subjugate everybody in Africa. And that's how the people of Congo all became Catholic. So And that's how the people of Congo all became Catholic. So they came over here as slaves, baptized Catholics with great devotion to Mary. And one of their most, uh, beloved feast days was September eighth, which is the nativity of Mary, where they had big prayer festivals and ritual dances and costumes and all that. And, uh, in seventeen thirty-nine, uh, she was called in Congo Mamansabi, the mother of God. And on, in seventeen thirty-nine, in South Carolina, they decided they'd had enough. So the day after this big feast day, they had an insurrection. And the slaves were going around, they started killing white masters and, um, slave owners. And sparing the ones who were tended to be a little kinder than the others, but the very cruel ones, they just killed. Well, the rights retaliated and started killing the slaves in this insurrection and cut off their heads and put them on poles lining the road alongside the Stono River. And so there's now a call, I think there's a historical marker there, but they want to, there's a call to make this a more, um, interesting point of history. I never learned in my history classes that slaves had such a rebellion. And it's just interesting to me that the, the Black Madonna was kind of a, an inspiration for it. So they were screaming in this during their rioting, lukanga, which was the Congolese word for liberty and salvation. And the sagamento, the word you see on the left is, refers to the, the clothing and the ritual dance and the sagamento. Sagramento, I think I forgot the R in there, um, is, um, was what they called the, the prayer dance that they did. And then, uh, we'll take a look here at Lakota Madonna. I've been very interested in Native American spirituality. I did a mural at St. Joseph's Indian School in Chapel in South Dakota several years ago. And just fell in love with Nicholas Blackalk, he's servant of God on his way to sainthood and have really been exploring, uh, native spirituality of the Plains Indians. And so here's a Lakota Madonna and child Mary sitting inside the teepee. What was the women's job to erect the teepee and make it home while the men were out hunting? And so there's Jesus wearing the feathered headdress of the, of the, the, the visionary and the, uh, you know, the, um, medicine man, the healer of the tribe. And lastly, tonight we'll end with this image. It's a Native American design, but the quotes from Martin Luther King. Out of the wombs of a frail world, new systems of justice and equality are being born. And I just think it's all started with Guadalupe and all these images of Mary. And this, this new incarnation of Christ as we get through these uncomfortable times of turmoil and, and hopefully, um, new images of justice and new systems of justice and equality are, will be at the other end of it. And the, here's Mary, the entire of knots, a title of Mary that Pope Francis has made very popular. It's his favorite title of Mary. And, um, she's untying our, our knots for us. So I wanted a Mary that looked like multi-cultured image. And she's wearing turquoise to honor the sacred color of Guadalupe. And, uh, just kind of this world, worldwide figure of Mary. And I think that's all I have for night. Yeah. If we, maybe we can read this prayer together if you can see on your screen. I saw this in Give Us This Day, my, uh, prayer book in, in last December for the feast of Guadalupe. You who are the mama of the prince of peace, whom God sent to us with his art and beauty amidst the roses of his creation. Woman of prayer, woman of gentleness, kindness of healing and kinship. Lady bowed impatient waiting of and for the eternal one in Christ Jesus. Remind us that your gift is the herald of peace with our God, with God's creation, which encompasses the earth, the stars, the seas, all we can see, all we can't see and each other. Ah, mama, teach us, reach us, beg God to open our eyes and souls and minds to our Savior Jesus, that we may dwell with him in this holy peace. Amen. So thank you so much. I'm, I'm happy to ask, if anybody has any questions or anything, I can, I'll hit stop, share. Oh, before I do that though, let me, uh, if you're pro Mickey McGrath dot com is my website. If you're interested in any, uh, reproductions or information or anything, if you need any help, my books and all that. And, uh, that's it. I'll hit stop, share and see your lovely faces again.
Mickey, thank you so much. You know, having been to Lafayette and our area a number of occasions, you know how beautiful the area surrounding us is. And you're on screen here with a lot of gardeners.
Ah, good.
Who know the names, even the Latin names of their plot, plants and flowers and who, uh, tend their gardens. So you really touched a lot of hearts, uh, with the image of the garden and the fact that we have our wonderful garden of learning, uh, at Saint Perpetua and that creation began in that lovely garden.
Oh, wow. Oh, in fact, I just showed your pictures that I took there of your garden to a group last week. It was a theme was spring, the healing power of spring and gardens. So I said, oh, my friend in Lafayette, California has this garden for the kids at school. And you all are, so you have Mission Dolores right there. So you all get on down there to Mission Dolores. And I hope you'll see it with new eyes. There, it's such a beautiful mission church there in San Francisco, but.
There, does anybody have any question? You can raise your hand or just unmute yourself if, if you do. Along with, um, Father Jack Lockren, our provincial of the oblate, uh, Toledo Detroit province. I also want to say hello and welcome, uh, Father Paul DeChant. Uh, he was here the last couple of days. And he, as you know, is a pastor in Fort Myers, Florida at a very large parish. And he's down in Southern California, the, visiting his mom Shirley DeChant. And, uh, they are on, uh, listening and tonight, uh, joining us. So, uh, good to have you, uh, Paul and your mom.
Hi, Paul. And your mom. And Betty, I see you popped in there, huh? Wendy, your mom's here. But she, does she have a bad hair day? We can't see her face.
Yes, well, sometimes that happens to us.
She was there for a while.
Mickey, it's called COVID hair.
Yeah, that's right. I look at mine. I forgot how long my hair is COVID.
You look a little bit like, uh, Einstein or one of those.
Brother Mickey.
Yeah.
Uh, is the chance of going to Spain in September, is that, uh, is that, uh, possible or not?
Well, my, uh, Dave, my travel guy is firmly convinced we're going. So I don't say anything to dissuade him, but as far as he's concerned, it's on. So he said he's going to, um, tell everybody. I think he's wanting to wait till the end of this month, just to make sure. Cause the big thing on our end, he said, most people, you know, will have been vaccinated and all that. It's more what's happening in Spain that he's concerned about. But Europe seems to be opening up again right now, huh? Poor India, fun, we're horrible.
Yeah.
So I've been reading up on trees about, I'm getting ready. So, um, I'm hope, I'm optimistic.
Good. Well, um, we, at the end of our time, uh, I do want to say, uh, a word about the next, uh, few, uh, town halls. Next week, um, there are two organizations that will be with us. Uh, I, I've really been glad this year that we've been able to, that we've been able to support a number of, uh, local charities. And we'll hear from the, it's called the Putnam Clubhouse. And their mission is to afford people living with mental illness, the opportunity to recover meaningful and productive lives through reintegration with the workplace and the community. Mariel or Meli Narkevich will be with us. And the other organization is entitled, We Care Services. And it offers therapy, education and parenting help for developmentally delayed infants and preschoolers. So two organizations that are doing, you know, just wonderful work for a group of people that are often marginalized. And then, um, the two weeks following that, and Mickey, you're giving us a good introduction, especially as you open our eyes to some of the reality that we either don't know about or don't want to know about what the church herself did in terms of the eradication of native peoples. And those, in, those encyclicals that you, that were put out by the church that, to go out and, and do these things, you know, w- we have to repent for that.
Right. And you can't heal it till it's brought to the surface.
You, you can't heal what you don't name. So on May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth, our social justice committee is going to, uh, do some presentation on building awareness on racial issues in Lafayette itself. And on May twenty-sixth, um, we'll continue that. And we're going to hear from some students at Campolindo and St. Mary's College, where there has been, uh, you know, some, uh, some outright discrimination. So, uh, recently someone emailed me, uh, and, and said, we need to become comfortable with the uncomfortable. And I think that's one of the things that you, uh, uh, help us to do. So I appreciate.
And I just saw in the news, this evening's news, that two elderly women in San Francisco were attacked on the street. Um, and it's happening in New York. The crimes against Asians are going through the roof up in New York.
It's good to see on Lafayette's, uh, community signed by Safeway Park, uh, Safeway entrance that this is Asian American History Awareness Month. And anything we can do as a, the community of the church and as the body of Christ to recognize that all are, are the children of God, uh, is to our benefit. But more importantly, that we take that message and live it out and, and share it with others. So again, uh, Mickey, our thanks to you for.
You're welcome. My pleasure. It's fun to be with you all. I wish we had more to visit. I finished my nightcap all alone. But.
Good. Well, Mickey, you deserve a good night's sleep now since it's 11 o'clock in Jersey. We still have a ways to go. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. God bless.